Thank you for attending the Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five Select Board Meeting for the Special Permit Application for thirty-five, thirty-seven Interlaken Road. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask for the cooperation of the citizens to allow the Select Board and the applicant to discuss the matters at hand. I will allow for citizens comment for one hour, two minutes for each person on the floor, then Zoom to remain consistent throughout the entire here process. We will open the meeting by a brief comment by Attorney Heep. Then we will discuss the conditions from the Select Board. So if Attorney Heep is on the line, you can speak.
Hello, everyone. Yeah. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we were asked in, you know, one of the open issues in the hearing has been the proper application of section six point six point three D of the Cottage Era Estate zoning by law. And the question at hand has what has been whether or not the last sentence of the section, which limits the gross floor area of new additions or new buildings to the to the gross floor area, to no more than the gross floor area of the existing principal structure. The question has been whether that last sentence in that section applies to all Cottage Era Estate applications in town, or only to those that are included in the R four district, or only those that are included in the R four district that seek a waiver of the maximum height limit. We've we've heard arguments on both sides of that from the applicant and from council to the butters. And since we were last together, week and a half, almost two weeks ago, we've given that question some considerable thought. And all what I will say is that that section of the bylaw is not drafted in a way that makes the answer abundantly clear. And there is certainly room for argument on both sides. But where we have landed is that the best application or interpretation of six point six point three D is, in our opinion, that the limit on gross floor area applies to all Cottage Era Estate projects, not merely those that are in the R four district. So that that section, we think, would be applicable to this particular project and the buildings that they're proposing to construct. So that's 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 where we've arrived at since since we were last together, and I wanted to get that 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 take out there in the open for everybody to consider.
Thank you, Attorney Heep.
Thank you.
So Mr. Scalise, are you giving or Mr. Attorney?
Silverstein is on the call. I'm just not sure if he's available to speak or give him a second. Jonathan, are you available? Can you hear me?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies for not being able to be there in person this evening. But with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to just speak briefly on that issue.
Yes.
So, no surprise, we have a different take on this. We had thought that this issue had been addressed and resolved early on. That was certainly our intent and our impression. That being said, in order to just move forward, I have sent an email about half an hour ago. I don't know if that's come through, but I sent it to the town administrator and town council. And if I could just read that proposed condition, this would be in addition to the thirteen other conditions that I had previously proposed. So the condition would say, the proposed buildings shall be designed with a maximum floor area not to exceed thirty seven thousand one hundred and ten square feet, or the actual gross floor area of the mansion as of two thousand and two, if different. Proposed underground parking garages shall be excluded from the floor area. If this results in the additional buildings, the total number of units may not be increased. So the intent of that condition is to, notwithstanding our view that that provision does not apply to this project, just to take that issue off the table, we are willing to redesign the buildings to the extent it requires the buildings to be made smaller. We may need to sort of split up existing buildings, reconfigure. The general design of the site plan is going to be the same, but instead of seven, the seven current buildings, it might be eight somewhat smaller buildings. We just, when we get into the final design stages, we would, of course, present those plans and we would have to satisfy the building commissioners, the zoning enforcement officer that were complying with this condition.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Just quick question. You said you sent in thirteen conditions and you have this one. Do we have written copies of these conditions?
I sent them on Friday, so I don't know if they've made them over to you or not.
Oh, they haven't. And I, yeah, so I would like to request a ten or fifteen minute recess to study these. I am not prepared to to just.
I think you don't ask Jonathan, you ask me.
Okay, well, I'm asking. I would like, I'm sorry, but this is this is not anything that made in my inbox. Do you guys see these?
I might have just missed it lots of span these days.
Do you have a copy?
I don't think I saw this.
Yeah, so is that okay, Jim?
Yes. Do we have to make a motion to adjourn or?
No, 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 we're just just a recess, I think. I don't know, I'm up for it.
Michael?
Yeah, I'll say recess. I don't, I.
Please turn off the mic.
I assume that you can look at you on Friday, so my apologies. I'll set work with a recess.
So we we will take a recess for ten minutes, which brings us back at six fifty. So recess has ended and we'll resume our meeting. So I'd like to ask if Attorney has entered the that paper that we just got into the record? Yeah.
Christopher. Yes.
Christopher.
He's aware.
I'm here, did I, but I but I bounced off the Zoom for a moment. I may have missed a moment of conversation.
Now, we took a recess. So we were handed new documents that we didn't get for some reason, which is okay. We read them over and these those conditions then entered into the record.
Okay. I mean, they certainly can be entered into the record, absolutely.
Okay. And Attorney Silverstein, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Well, I don't know, Madam Chair, if you want me to just speak to the new condition that I just proposed in response to the issue that Attorney Heep discussed at the beginning of the meeting, or if you want me to review all of the conditions. Or I'll take my cue from you in terms of the order of how we discuss the various topics tonight.
Okay. So I guess we will go to the Patrick and I had a couple of conditions. Patrick, the one to ask your conditions.
Yeah, I think the first thing I'd like to respond, the only the only question of merit that I have related to what you guys are proposing is, I think we ended up at the same spot in terms of the conservation restriction on your map. And I am just starting a little bit because of there's now so many papers in front of me. Yeah, yeah. So my strong preference, well, okay, this is obviously wetland. We have an agri hood. You've indicated a desire to to have some flexibility on non-residential uses up there. And and I think that whether it's camping or farm to table, in the conservation restriction draft that I proposed, which I assume you've seen?
Yes.
Yes. What I'm basically saying is, you take your seventeen acres, and and I don't even care if, by the way, you split it up into seventeen acres in different spots, but that seventeen acres afford you the ability to do any of those non-residential things that you like. And that is what is memorialized in that conservation restriction. And that gives us the ability to basically put the entire back in with the carve out. So you basically have complete flexibility to 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 have the alternative uses. You could do a you could do a barn with the horses. You could do trails. You can do whatever you want, but we but we've not whatever, whatever within the limits of the conservation restriction. But this gives us the ability to basically not kind of, you know, you've got some flexibility. You can you can split apart where you want it. This is like seventeen acres is what, I mean, it's a it's a lot of land. I think, and if you look at this map, it's most of this land. And 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 frankly, if we could go from the wetland all the way to here in the conservation restriction and carve out some uses, I'd even be willing to go up to eighteen or twenty acres, give you a little bit more flexibility somewhere else. I just would like to see all of this in the conservation restriction. That allows us to conserve what is approximately two hundred and seventy-seven acres when you include the wetland, which you can never build on anyway. And to me, that just basically, you know, you know, you know, reaffirms that, you know, that the the preservation aspect of this. So. I mean, I think we had some hesitation in that regard, and it's primarily related to the operation of the resort and there being some unknowns at this time, particularly related to the fact that if you have a franchise of some sort that helps with the reservation system, they often come in with criteria for things. And we'd like some flexibility in that area if they wanted, I don't know, some a bike trail for a pass.
Carve it out.
Carve it out. So the key, our issue is, is that we're not sure what those uses necessarily are until we get through those negotiations, which could take us some time. So if if we could delay the the CR in the agri hood for a period of time, I think that would afford the ability to solve that issue.
The problem is that though, that the advice we're getting from council is that we we have, we cannot leave discretionary items unaddressed. All right, so if you want, we can take a month or two and figure all this stuff out. That's up to you. I'm, it's completely up to you. But the reality is that, you know, if you if we broadly word bike trails, or it's it's recreational use.
Yeah, I just don't.
Carve it out, the recreational uses in the conservation language I propose.
So if it was in the agri hood area, it's just that it's a difficult, it's we just, it's impossible for us to predict what we'd be asking for. But, you know, it's also been my experience that the CR process takes some time, right? You don't, it does, it can take months to formulate a CR. So as long as, I mean, if the town was willing to work with us, but I think we would. I wrote it this weekend, and then we would turn it over. Have you seen the language I wrote?
Yeah.
And that would be the extent of our involvement. And then we turn over the Conservation Commission and Berkshire National Resources. And look at, even if even if it was twenty acres, it doesn't have to be like delineate. You could take up, you could basically over time, you know, use up to twenty acres for recreational purposes, and the rest of the two hundred and seventy-seven acres, which includes the wetland, is protected in perpetuity. And I think that's that's, it seems to me a reasonable thing that gives you a lot of flexibility. But because of the uncertainty, I think we're kind of in a position where we're not comfortable with that condition as writ. That's why we.
I mean, Madam Chair, could I could I jump in quick?
Yes.
Sorry to cut people off, but, you know, I think I I hear what Mr. White is saying, and I understand it. You know, we weren't looking for any sort of discretionary, you know, approval to be kicked down the the road. What we were really asking for is, I mean, we're agreeing to put the vast majority of that area in a conservation restriction. But the I think what you hear we're struggling with, if we're talking to Four Seasons or Meridian or another brand, you know, we just want to be able to tell them that there's going to be flexibility in terms of what sorts of amenities and recreational activities can happen back there, and we can't possibly think of every eventuality. The other thing that concerns me, quite frankly, is for this to be a conservation restriction, it has to meet certain criteria, and the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs has to sign off on it. And the another concern I would have is that a carve out of the sort we're talking about of activities that would be allowed might not be agreeable, you know, they might not agree to to sign off on it. And.
But but it's in the template, Jonathan, come on. It's in the it's in the state's model template that we can carve out recreational uses. It's right there, and I literally took everything I wrote was based on the the model template. And I can read it in the record if you like.
Let me, let me give, and again, I'm speculating, I'm trying to come up with examples. We have no idea, but what if, you know, there's a desire to put yurts back there to give massages? That's.
Certainly, certainly, yurts are camping.
But but it's low impact.
I included camping in the seventeen acres, all right? Yurts are camping. Look, look, this is this is your permit, but, you know, this was, this this idea that there might be additional uses on there in a future phase is something you guys sprung on us. This is not something that was in the original plan. I'm trying to accommodate where you're coming from. But all along, I've done my, you know, the the reason why there's so much density here is so we can protect all of what's here. And and.
Absolutely, and we're not asking, you know, I I think what we did not anticipate was a request for a conservation restriction back there. We have accommodated it. At the last meeting, I remember very distinctly the statement being made that we could either put the entire area in, you know, the the entire area restricted but with carve outs, or instead, we could extend the amount of area we proposed for a conservation restriction without the remaining reduced area having a conservation restriction.
And I remember that you said, you said that that the concern was, when I proposed the agricultural restriction, that you might want to do recreational activities. And it turned out that the model bylaw, the model conservation restriction the state has, carves out recreational activities. So the so your concern around recreational activities was was actually, was actually, you know, anticipated by the model conservation restriction. You want recreation?
I also said we might want to do farm to table dinners and other things and what I've already said.
It's in that, I listed that in the language. It says that.
We can, but that's not part of the state's model. And what I also very clearly said was, I was concerned about trying to delineate a prescriptive list of every possible thing that could happen back there. All we were asking for is for a small portion of that rear area for us to be able to come back and ask for permission. This isn't leaving a discretionary approval down the road. It would be a new special permit request. So that, you know, I don't think we're being inconsistent on that. And look, it's the board's decision to make. All we can do is advocate for what we're asking for. And if ultimately, we're giving a permit that we can't exercise, then so be it. You know, I'm, I'm not trying to browbeat you, I'm just trying to be really clear about what we think can work from a business perspective. And a lot of the things that we've been asked to agree to, and I know we're not there yet, it's just, it would be like trying to start a business with one hand tied behind their back. I mean, it's just not going to work. And this is, we we feel that this is one of those things. But ultimately, of course, it's for the board to decide. So.
And I just want to point out, in the permitted activities under number ten, it is the horses. It is the barns to handle the horses. It is horticultural, raising fruits and vegetables and berries and nuts and the rest of it. It is, it is. You know, it is the. Is agritourism. And I think that this is, I think this is the important one, I'm going to read it. The use of the premises for agritourism activities, which activities shall be defined as ancillary commercial activities and events that support the financial viability of the use of the premises for agricultural activities, which which activities that that be permitted into, okay, farm-based entertainment such as farm to table dinners, camping, harvest festivals, farm-based education addressing the subjects of sustainable agriculture, food production, nutrition, indoor environmental conservation ecology with prior approval to the grantee. You know, so so basically, this gives you a whole bunch of activities that you just would work out with BNRC or the CONCOM. And 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 I tried to kind of make it as broad as possible for the kind of commercial activities that you might want. Look, and I want the business to work for you. I also want the conservation restriction to apply to the whole, you know.
I frankly, I don't, I don't really want to go through a special permit process on this again.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I was tempted. One thing that came to mind, and I don't know how it fits in, but just as an example of something that pops up, would solar be allowed on the roof of the barns?
No, it's prohibited.
Oh, no, solar is allowed on every rooftop in in the conditions that we're going to get to in mind. Solar is allowed on every rooftop. And with the option for you guys to not want to do it on the mansion, that's fine if you think it'll detract from its architectural beauty, but solar is allowed and encouraged. Because you'd be able to orientate the roofs of those barns with some flexibility.
These barns are greenhouses, you're talking.
Greenhouses.
Greenhouse, okay.
Ends up out there in agricultural buildings. Will we be able to orientate or orientate those to the sun much more easily than existing? Well, our site plan here is somewhat dictated by a limited space where the space back there is a little.
I'm saying carve out twenty acres.
Okay.
Do like barn, and to do like horses, to do like, you know, you can bring some burrows up there if you want. I don't really care. I, what I want to do is to make sure that the vast majority of this land is conserved. Go back to preservation by law and try to preserve the land, preserve the mansion, as we're guessing.
I'm, I'm not at liberty to agree with you on this particular topic.
That's kind of the first, that's the first line. So I will, I will go through additional conditions. Hold on. And I did print some extras out if you want, you know.
Thank you.
And there's about fifteen more on the town printer, which is two doors down the left. If anybody else wants, I don't want to wait for it. All right. Second one. Oh, yeah. Oh, wait, 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 hold on, I got more. I got more right here. All right. So you're planting a lot of trees. This next one, it may not even apply, but I think that is, I'd like to see a net of zero cutting. So, you know, basically, when you're cutting trees in the back there, and this frankly creates an incentive to not cut so many, you're adding all these trees that, but if if the amount you're cutting is more than the amount that you're planting.
So you're suggesting that we cut trees in the agri hood.
Yeah.
We've got to replace every single tree.
Including the ones you planted in your planting plan. So you may not have any, you know.
That's a risk for us, though. You you've offered us a twenty acre piece back there. We may. I mean, we've given you a densely planted landscape plan. That's a real risk. I mean, we may end up with three acres back there, or five acres back there based on the number of trees. You know, I thought it was.
Where where are you going to plant all those extra trees?
Well, I remember the map at the at the agriculture and forestry. I plan to maybe work out.
When I read that draft condition, I thought it was isolated to this, you know, because I'm going to cut trees, for example, for the potentially, you know. With the this duplex, you know, we'll have to cut some trees there. It'll be within the buffer zone or near the buffer zones, and the Conservation Commission will be involved. I think the number of plantings on the property would compensate for that.
Okay.
So that that's very fair, going back. I just have no, I have not done a tree survey.
Okay. The goal here is to basically give you guys incentive to clear as little as possible.
Okay.
So if you want to do the yurts and the canoeing and the whatever it is, you know, not canoeing, camping, you know, like, you know, that we don't want to, I would prefer to not see twenty acres clear cut. I would rather, I think, and I think it's better for your business if, you know, you have the little camping area and you've got the farm area and you've got some greenhouses.
About doing it right. So, yeah, I have no objection to.
All right, I can, I can live without that one, then. But I think that, like you said, if it applies to this, if you're cutting in one place, I'd like to see.
That makes sense.
Okay. This only applies to the to the the portion east of the westland.
Yes.
The wetland. Okay. Third, look, you're going to have excess produce.
Agreed.
And I would like to see when you have excess produce, and that's why I put in a five percent, I don't, I'm not a farmer. Chuck's a farmer, you can tell me. When we have excess produce, I would like to see it go to folks who are hungry in the brushers as directed by the Agriculture and Forestry Commission. I don't care if it's a food pantry, I don't care if it's whatever, I would like to see us share the wealth here.
We agree.
Okay, good. Organic farming, I would prefer that our farming methods be organic. I have some flexibility inside the greenhouse because I understand that that.
We would just ask that that be the extent practicable.
Okay.
We're not farmers, but if if our farmer tells us we have some, you know, disease or something we need to deal with, I guess.
Yeah.
We're on board with the concept.
Yeah.
Just there's, I just don't want to be locked.
All right, but I don't, the next one is is important. I don't want to see exfoliants. I don't want to see pesticides used to clear the land back there. It is, it is like kind of wetlands that flows into water and, you know.
Yeah, okay. So pesticides may be used in either outdoor or greenhouse growing or to control insects in outdoors, no exfoliants or.
Basically, I don't want you to spray for mosquitoes, and I don't want, I don't want you to use exfoliants. We have, we banned as a town at town meeting, mosquito spraying for the town. You know, we drew from the mosquito thing.
Okay.
And I get that, you know, bugs are bugs and everybody likes bugs, but I just, you know, and you talk to anybody in the CONCOM in Stockbridge, it has been for twenty, thirty years, the policy of the town that we don't like pesticides. And we went to court on the herbicide thing with the with the lake six, seven years ago because we we really don't like herbicides and pesticides. And you can't live without mosquito spraying.
I think anything that's going to clear the operation, this is a property you cannot agree to. So I just want to be clear to you when everything.
What does that mean?
But I said.
Well, if if. Is that a pair? I mean, I'm just asking. Is that not?
Well, if we had ticks, we have a tick problem back there, we can't spray for it. No one does in town, and that's the way it works.
Yeah, but they use that.
But we use use stuff ourselves, right?
Yeah. We're going to have to spray up the mountain for ticks, so.
No, no. I was just thinking, we had a trail out there, you got kids out there, you can spray.
Yeah. I mean, generally, you don't get ticks on the trail, you get ticks when you're when you're in the brush.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Like.
Just, so the, I think the overriding concern on our part is that is, as these conditions delve into the operational considerations of the project, it becomes difficult, more difficult for us. We understand the zoning and planning side, some of these feel like they've gone.
Can you, can you limit it within the buffer zone?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So no, if we could limit the pesticide application, keep it outside the two hundred foot town buffer zone, then I can move with that.
Okay.
You know, I just don't want, as it gets close to the water, I don't want poison.
Jurisdictional by the Conservation Commission, and I know their policies, there's no issue.
Okay. That's buffer zone. All right, let's keep going. That's your front yard. This is pretty standard facade preservation, internal preservation. Frankly, I think that, you know, that this is where we could have spent more time on understanding what the plans are. Is this consistent with what your plans are?
It is, if you if you include, when you talk about facade preservation and internal, at the end of the internal preservation comment, you add to the maximum extent practicable, I'd like that on the top one as well. So we have our architect here with us. So we have our architect here with us, or he was, but, you know, he may, he may have a much better idea about things than I would as a senior. So I just.
There has to be some baseline of preservation.
Absolutely.
Can't do this.
No, we agree.
So you, you, Jonathan said at the last meeting that you could say 50% of the sides and the front facade and maybe the staircase.
Right.
So that's what I put in there. You know, I mean, at some point, you gotta.
No, we're not running away from that promise. It's just, I guess, it just depends how it's implemented. It's like anything else. If if there's a bad piece of trim and we want to replace it because we can't preserve it, we just want everyone to understand we're going to do the best that's.
Yeah, I know, of course.
And the folks on the ground, the architects.
No yard or do that.
In the building inspector have to, will agree. That's what we'll do. I just, I can't. Some things are going to be, I think, impossible to say because they're not there.
Three is just the restaurant.
Yeah, the thing with the restaurant is we have a restaurant proposal application in the, in both the mansion and in the restaurant.
Okay.
So when you say total seats, it makes me worry that you want me to.
Okay, so what is the mansion seat?
It it might be a hundred, you know.
Take out three then. I mean, look, you know.
Yeah, we we get it. We, you don't want a 300-seat restaurant.
You could fit a 100-seat restaurant in the mansion?
Uh, if you're, I think you're gonna have, I think you could have.
You the architect? Yeah. Oh, hey, hey, architect. What's your name?
Robert Harrison.
What, Ray Harris?
Robert Harrison.
Robert Harris. How many, how many, how many seats you need in the restaurant?
Patrick, we're talking amongst ourselves.
What?
We're not including the public yet.
He works for the applicant.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry.
I mean, look, I think that we should, we should have a condition around total number of seats. How many you need?
Well, so that's a business decision, but I I will tell you that you could easily fit more than 100 people.
Okay, so it's 250 then, between the two restaurants.
Two restaurants?
Well, he's saying there's one in the mansion and there's one in the, and there's one in the.
Standing one.
Yeah.
Actually, I think part of the definition of a hotel includes a restaurant.
Okay, good. All right, that, yeah, okay, sorry, babe. The next one is, I'd like to see one plan in place. So once we have this plan, I don't see.
So withdraw the subdivision plan to record a document, so it's, it's not like, it's not, it's not something we can withdraw. I don't think, I defer to.
Can I speak to this one quickly? Um, I don't, so the subdivision plan was like a three-lot subdivision plan solely for the purpose of zoning protection. We actually have not recorded it because we don't need to record it in order to get the zoning protection. Case law is clear that even once a, you know, if a zoning, a subdivision approval uh, is ultimately rescinded, the zoning protection does not, uh, is not affected. And so the three-lot subdivision plan that we submitted is nothing that we would ever proceed with. It's not on record. There really isn't any process for withdrawing it. But what we would not be able to do is in any way jeopardize the zoning protection, which was the purpose of that. Um, and I don't, so I don't really think that it, that there's a method to do that established. I don't think there's a purpose served by it. Uh, and the potential unintended consequence is one that we simply could not accept of losing the zoning protection.
Uh, our lawyers told me that that was the least likely to get through, but, you know. The reason I was asking for it frankly is you do have zoning protection with the fact that you filed a special permit that also locks the zoning. And frankly, we've had an experience in this town where we do a permit and then for 10 years they go on and they keep coming back. And by withdrawing that protection, it caused, you know, you're, the, well, when you talk about zoning protection, what they're talking about is protection from the residential inclusionary bylaw. And I frankly want to give you guys a lot of incentive not to come back here and try to revise this again. And so by withdrawing it, it it basically says, this is it. And and in the absence of this, you have to come back. All of a sudden, you're going to pay what is much more standard, which is the full 10% of the project would go toward affordable housing. And I get that you don't have to do that now, but the reason I put it in there was to create a disincentive to go through like this Revassa experience, if you will, where it was kind of, you know, 10 years later and we're still talking about it with the neighbors or whatever.
We like this plan.
We like this plan. All right, all right. I'm gonna, so you just saw me cave on one.
I appreciate it.
So we get to the rest of them.
So the next three are checkmarks on my list.
All right.
Construction, revised plan, lighting, water and sewer costs. Let's know something I don't. We've met with the superintendents. Don't anticipate any costs.
So so I I spent an hour yesterday with someone who lives nearby. So I want to, I I don't want to endorse, I have no expertise in water, so I'm asking.
All right.
His concern has to do with flow volume. Because this is a guy who built seven of the uh, water and sewer treatment plants in Western Massachusetts. We worked with McMillian. I don't want to put his name out there, but he probably knows where it is, you know. And and he, his point was this, it doesn't have to do with overall capacity. It has to do with peak capacity. So, you know, if if there's not enough time for the ultraviolet gizmo to treat it and it flows through too fast, then you end up with effluent going into the river that is untreated. And that's when you get into the big giant cost to the town. And and you're looking at what Lennox just said with the $45 million upgrade. And this issue, it flowing in too much is responsible for the $77 million increase. I mean, a redesign of the Pittsville plant, according to this guy. I don't know anything about whether that's.
Tanks are the answer. And if we need them, we'll work it out with the sewer. It's called an equalization tank. So what what it does is it tempers the flow as it unuses the facility. So if, I don't anticipate it will be that, but if if we did, that would be our responsibility. So that's agreeable.
Okay, but yeah, where I'm coming from is basically like, you know, like, it makes no sense if we had a $20 million upgrade in the plant.
The collection system has been inspected all the way up to our property line. The sewer line on our property is good.
Michael, what does that sound like to you? You know more about this stuff than me. The collection tanks.
Yeah, there's different ways. Some of those things were discussed in the Glendale one, upholding sewage back on peak times in order to discharge them at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. There's different things that can be done to reduce the peak.
Okay, and 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 you you mentioned maybe a flow meter. Is that something that you guys are planning?
Water meters will be required because we'll be on the town system anyway, so.
Now, the flow meter aren't coming out, though, not water meters.
That's what comes out, what goes in, right? So usually.
You're tracking the water flow.
Once again, I'm not.
They need a water sewer comes up.
Just trying to protect the town here. I can't.
You, yes, you're covered.
You feel we're covered? Is this good enough?
I can, we can run it past legal too, prior to, but yes.
Okay, because. You can't be on the hook.
I have a meeting in Charlestown tomorrow with the sewer commission on the same exact issue. It's standard practice that it's the applicant's responsibility to stave way.
Okay. All right, uh. So I think that the room count, I actually, I I, there's a type on this. I put nine in. It's in red because I wasn't sure. You're saying six. And and then I, and is the count on the hotel residences consistent with what you guys have? And and with this revision of the size, how are you going to deal with the revision of the size? Is, are the units going to be smaller or are the bedrooms?
Our standard, our standard building, uh, our prototype, so the way this is designed right now on our latest revision was to create a prototype. So we'll adjust the prototype smaller um, to make sure that it's below the 37,000. You think we're within 10 or 15% of that right now, so it's not a huge difference.
Okay, so but so.
What that might require is a little different setup as it relates to these three L-shaped buildings.
Okay, but but in terms of the one, two, and three bedroom counts, the point I'm making here is if people are going to downsize.
Yes.
I want to keep the two and three bedrooms. So if somebody needs a caregiver.
The specificity is the only thing. I mean, if if you could, if there was, you know, plus or minus 5% or something.
All right.
You know, if you gave me some room there so that the architect can do his job.
Okay.
That that's, that's.
That's Robert, the architect, right? Um.
He's going to shoot me later, so.
All right, the next one, the next one has to do with obviously just trying to maximize revenue to the town. I don't want, if it's less than a year rental, I want them 30 days. That gets it on the.
It's a minute to figure that out, but we all understand. We're, we're agreeable.
Okay, that just basically is like if people are coming on vacation, let them pay the extra 6% for the town so that we can like pay for our new school. All right.
So just on that issue, um, this is going to be a licensed hotel. And these units will be, will be included within the hotel license. And by law, um, hotels are not short-term rentals and they're subject to the same occupancy tax. So the town's going to get that revenue.
Even if it's a three-month hotel stay?
Absolutely.
If I could, I I just researched this for another case.
Wait, um, you're, we're still discussing things.
But we're fine with that condition if it gives you more comfort. There's no intent here.
They're going to condition it anyways, you know.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, and 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 this is sort of the, the next one is the, what I call the Kropalu. I hate to name another one, but, you know, Kropalu does educational packages and I just, if if there's some kind of thing that.
We're not trying to circumvent the tax.
All right, good, good, okay. Um. Next thing is fine. What about, what's your solar plan? We never talked about that. Do you plan on solar for all these roofs?
It's, it's, so on that one, we haven't yet because the design, the specific designs will include a HERS rating under the.
Yeah, right.
So I I want to let the HERS raider, who's a professional consultant, do their thing. So maybe it's, it's more efficient, makes more sense for us to spend money on, you know, a different, more insulation or a different boiler or, you know, different fuel. So I guess I would leave it to the experts if I, if I were so inclined to let them give us HERS ratings. When you have, uh, the energy code right now is so strict, they're actually talking in Massachusetts. So lowering the standard because it's so strict, it's becoming.
We're about to, yeah, well, on our, on our town meeting, we've got increasing, I know check laws just want the specialized stretch code. You know, stretch.
Right, but I mean, you understand that under the international building code, they're going to like an R60 in the roof. Massachusetts is talking about changing that to R49, lowering that standard because.
It didn't make a difference. It costs more and it didn't make a single difference.
It's not practical.
Yeah.
So I guess there's a whole science to this. So us dabbling in that, myself included, I I don't, I prefer that we not. So as part of these conditions, you know, that these projects have.
You want this to go away, but you're.
But it's going to happen.
All right.
As part of the HERS rating, one way or another, I just, I don't want to commit.
But if the, if, I have a question for Chris and for Jonathan then. If the town adopts the extended stretch code, is that right, stretch code? I'm getting tired.
Yeah.
Yeah, stretch, the specialized stretch code, uh, next week at town meeting, are these guys subject to that specialized stretch here?
Yes.
So this isn't locked into the old one? All right, like.
If we pull a building permit, we're required to.
All right, sounds good.
And I agree, just, this is Chris. I agree with that.
Okay, next one is fossil fossil fuel avoidance. I think it's kind of the same thing.
The next is, yeah, it's the same thing.
Once again, not an engineer.
Okay.
Um, and forget the next one. All right, that was just a repeat. Sequencing. Okay.
So this is one that I want to be in charge of, not you. So so that's, not so much as what we linked it to the special permit, you need. You know, I have no objection to you saying you want me to landscape up in the phase.
I don't care about the landscape. I care that the conservation restriction is in place first. The screening is in place in terms of protecting the light and noise from the neighbors.
Yeah.
And that you do the mansion and you do the mansion before we start the restaurant. We're in this for the mansion and the land.
The only exception to that, I agree with everything you said, but the, this says prior to we pull a permit, and I'd like to have the permits all pulled before I file this.
Oh, I don't care about the permits. Where does it say that?
It says, it says, uh, before any construction work begins, and I'd like to have it before the CO is issued instead.
What does CO mean?
Certificate of Occupancy. So I could start the construction on these buildings because when I pull a building permit, that will reveal any other issues that I may have missed. I'll need a stormwater permit. I'll need every other.
The certificate of occupancy is once they're already built.
So within the timeframe of building that building, which could take a year, I'll get, I'll make sure I get the CR.
Which building? This one?
You tell me.
The mansion we're talking about, just the mansion.
Yep.
So you want to be able to work on the mansion and work on the CR at the same time?
Sure.
I can live with that. Just those two, though. Just the mansion.
Right, and so the rest of these, though, you kind of get into it a little bit, like renovations to existing buildings, mansions, barn and restaurant renovation.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like some flexibility there because.
Got it. So you want phase four, five, and six to can, to all be combined? And that whatever comes after the mansion and the CR.
Makes total sense. You want, we, we owe you the mansion as part of this application, so I have no objection.
So basically four, five, and six is you finish at your own, and and to the public, I will point out, this permit is is not to exceed, okay? They've got to have a business plan which says that they're going to be trying to sell these hotel residences, and they're going to try to be selling these single-family homes. There may or may not be demand for these. This is something that is not necessarily, you know, going to be something you sell out in three months. It could take 10 years, 15 years to sell these out. We have no idea. But our job is to, oops, our job is to break her glass. Uh, sorry about that. Uh, our job is to, is to get, is to get the part done that is what our responsibility, the preservation by law. Okay. All right, uh, the payments, was this consistent with what you did?
Just you added four duplex homes, which cost us $100,000 that we didn't offer.
All right. But you are solemn, right? I mean, and I didn't, I didn't add in the, for the 133.
I'm not going to give you $100,000. I don't have.
Come on, you're not giving it to me. You're giving it to some poor police officer or firefighter who's trying to buy a house.
We offered 25,000.
I tried to slip in it.
Yep.
But post-occupancy conditions, no fireworks.
You know, without select board permission. What if, what if, what if there was a really extreme event? What if?
How about we, we focus on the idea that you've got 120 acres up here and we're trying to protect for nature? And the thing that drives the animals crazy is fireworks. I hate fireworks. Everybody hates fireworks. I don't want fireworks.
I love fireworks.
I thought it's fireworks that everyone had to come to either select board or.
Fire department.
Yeah, to get.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't want them here.
No, that's kind of a.
What about the anniversary you're planning?
And they can't, and and the fact is, we never deny them uh, because we allow them with the come into the permit and not once have we, personally, if I could get my way, we would do it in July for, if we tangle it on parade and it'd be banned for the rest of the town. I'm happy to put that bylaw forward.
Oh, put that forward, but I wouldn't restrict it because that's kind of.
All right, that's fine.
The bylaw's fine, but I wouldn't restrict them because that's kind of.
All right, uh, what's the plan on outdoor events?
Yeah, that's a tough one. If if we had, um, so say from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock, folks going to Tanglewood, come here and have a glass of wine before they went to Tanglewood, this condition would prohibit that.
Would it? So would that be in the restaurant? These are like special events.
In the brochures, we'd like to be outdoors in the summer.
Yeah, but but the restaurant's not going to have outdoor scene? I'm just saying, like, this would be like kind of the big readings, you know, whatever, and, you know, it's it's sort of.
It's just starting to get into our business.
All right, all right, on this one. I don't want to pick that one. And and the sound, we got the sound.
That, I I see what you've done and and I, I think that's in your bylaw.
That's standard.
Isn't it already in the bylaw?
Do we have a sound bylaw?
Yeah, no, outside. Do we have to play music outside?
Yeah, no amp, like the music. Remember, we, we always used to try, but we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I got. Do you want to recess to talk about these, where we came up and I would ask the chair.
Five minutes and talk about.
So my, um, conditions, you've already, with Patrick already.
Can you give an additional copy of those I lost?
I only made one.
You don't know what's what anymore.
But, um, Patrick already, you've already agreed to several of them.
I haven't seen her.
Yeah. Um, so the only one, there's just a couple, um, because I had the no short-term rentals, um, the CR, um, no toxic fertilizers if possible. Um, one that I I thought of, but I don't know if it's possible because I don't know if we can condition this. If any future water or sewer connections are created, that the neighbors on 183 and the south entrance of Lake Drive residential area may have the opportunity to connect in with this plumbing, you know, the.
Sure.
But I don't know if that's something we have to do with water and sewer or.
If we're in the right of way with the sewer line, then you have the right to tie into it regardless.
Okay.
Okay, so, and we, we actually have an 8-inch sewer making that's on our property already. It crosses diagonally across the front lawn right up.
Oh, I got it, okay.
So we've already, we have sewer infrastructure in place, um, other than maybe some impermanence that we need as it relates to flow. Um, we've already met with the superintendent and discussed details and our willingness to be collaborative and cooperative. So that's, it kind of falls into that, but I don't anticipate that being available or necessary.
I thought we should at least talk about it.
True.
Um. Since they're our neighbors and butters, um. And I think you've already dealt with this, planning of events if two or more do occur simultaneously on any given day or night. Rather, um, try to stagger them to, um.
We put forth a.
But I think you are. But I think you already did, yeah.
A detailed plan and said that we, and I think I gave you a half a dozen bullet points on.
Right. And the other one that I think we've also talked about is, um, to keep the roof heights as close to thirty-five without compromising the underground parking spaces, because I think that the underground parking spaces are so important to keep pavement, but I think you dealt with that.
We have, and I mean, to be honest and open in this process, the, the kind of late-breaking change in the building footprints to be smaller is only going to keep the buildings at that maximum level height. So we have a, the mansion's over forty-five feet. And with the buildings raised up four feet, we have a forty-one foot building height with a four-foot garage space. So it's forty, the buildings are nearly forty-five feet tall.
That's all I had, that you've went through with Patrick, so.
And you might have, Mike Profoni today spent extensive time responding to some maps that were circulated around town today. And I would like to give Michael a couple of minutes to discuss the findings that, I, I say findings, I don't mean that legally, but around kind of the water and, and, uh, and it included reaching out to Brian Yellen, who is the consultant from UMass, uh, who is, uh, doing the water study that Jenny had recommended. So is it all right if Michael spends a couple of minutes talking about water and what we found out today?
Michael Canales or Michael?
Michael Canales.
Yeah, Mike Profoni could be here, but I was part of the conversation this afternoon with Mike Profoni.
Okay, um, yes, you didn't mention it, but yes, you can speak.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes. So, uh, the, um, so it was about distributed, which showed Everett Lake and a bunch of contours and around it showing, uh, delineation of areas. What this actually is, is that we contacted, uh, the people that are doing the study and this is a.
This is UMass.
Geological materials, uh, thick till, thin till, swath, wetland, shallow bedrock. Uh, and it was a question about what the root overall root lead was on that map. Uh, Brian Yellen from, uh, UMass Amherst identified that this was a, this has nothing to do with the recharge area. This is a superficial geological map. And drumel and till is a hydraulic type material that actually would impede the recharge.
And we also had DEP review it.
Yeah. And it was a simultaneous email and that, that says the thick till. So basically that was a, not a survey of the groundwater, it was the survey of the geological points of the ground. Um, many which were this thick till area, which is, uh, not conducive for, uh, water to pass through. So, uh, that was from DEP and from UMass Amherst who was doing it. So just wanted to clarify what that plan was and what that map was that was being distributed now.
And, and I, I would just point out that I'm not sure it's any better to plan on in the current zoning, sixty-two houses and sixty-two eighty-ews, where there could be foundations distributed all over that property, rather than concentrating the development. I was on the conservation commission for a number of years. Jamie's on it now. You know, and every conference I ever went to, as they said, build up, don't build spread out. And what that does is it minimizes the impact on the ground and on the impervious surfaces. And I know that if this feels dense in this twenty or so acres here, but when you look at what isn't dense, you know, we're not, we're not disturbing not only what's above all here, but the ground to build houses all in here. And, and I, and I, and I, my preference is, is, uh, the basically open space resource design principles, which is you concentrate your development and you leave the land alone, and that's what we're trying to do here.
Yep, nice one. So I agree.
All right. Do you have any other questions, Patrick?
All right, no, I'll go ahead and answer it. It's been great.
So we'll take a recess for five minutes and, uh, forty-eight. For forty thirty-seven, forty-three, we'll reconvene. So I'm, we're going to resume our meeting. Our recess has ended. And if I could have order in the room, thank you. So I will, um, as I stated earlier, can I have order in the room, please? That means you guys, thanks. Um, so again, as I stated, two minutes, I'll follow the same pattern of going up the rows and then go to Zoom. Um, please state your name and, um, and we will time here two minutes. Um. All right, so the front row.
Jamie, suggestion, and I know that this is totally a prerogative, I think that, I think we should preference butters and their lawyers first, and I think that we should give them a little extra time because what I've sensed in the past meetings is that folks feel rushed to get all their comments through and then frustrated and frankly, they've gotten a lot of feedback on this issue. And I don't mind spending a little bit more time here to hear people out. You know, we, we threw a lot of information at them today and, and, and I don't, I would rather personally not be criticized for limiting folks' ability to give us feedback. So I, I, it could be that we encourage people to do two minutes, but, you know, but especially with folks who have detailed comments like Attorney Krieger or Attorney.
Fuzaloski.
Fuzaloski might have, I think that perhaps we should just show a little bit of.
So I did speak.
I would like to ask counsel, I don't think that's proper. I think everyone during public speak time could have the same privilege to speak, whether it be a butter or neighbor or, or against.
I agree. Um, I spoke a long time with Attorney Heap, I believe he's still on and he can speak to this. We spoke a long time about this and he said to follow the pattern of two minutes and that people don't get preference if they're in a butter or just someone who lives in Stockbridge, that everyone gets the same amount that he felt that people could get their thoughts and get their main point together and say that we, this, we've had several meetings. Everyone's been able, I've given everyone a chance to speak if they wanted to, and we are on the same topic. We haven't changed topics. We're on the same topic because everyone has spoken so, every meeting consecutively. So, um, and we've gotten emails, letters, we've read them, we've gone through them, we've entered them in the record. I think I've been really.
I think you have been too. I'm not criticizing.
You are, but that's okay. It's okay.
A suggestion, a suggestion.
Of course.
If we don't use up the entire hour in the two minutes, then we'll let people have a second.
How about that?
Okay.
Like seconds.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seconds are the one thing.
I'll agree to that.
All right. Compromise. Attorney, since your name is a little difficult.
Fuzaloski.
Just don't start by complaining about the two-minute. You're ready to complain, okay?
First, on the hotel issue, state law says that if someone stays in a hotel for more than ninety days, the hotel is required to refund the hotel tax back to the beginning to deduct that from the.
Which handles the right state law, so that says that, okay.
Uh, second, we agree with town council's interpretation on the size of buildings. But I urge you to look at, uh, Mr. Silverstein's email carefully because what he's saying is, okay, you can resize the building, although have more buildings. And in that case, it's not appropriate for that to be a condition. It has to be such a substantial revision to his plan adding additional buildings so they can maintain their objective in, in terms of size, number of units. That should be a modification of the plan that's provided to you before you vote on the plan itself. I, I find the interaction between the board and the developer pretty interesting. You're not limited to impose the conditions that the developer set. You're here to impose conditions that protect the town and its residents from the impact of this development, even if the developer was exactly from the position. Uh, in general, um, we understand that, but it seemed to be a conceit every time that the developer says he doesn't like something. Fortunately, I'd be in the position of suggesting, uh, uh, conditions that, uh, would reduce impacts. But in this case, this plan is so far out of what the bylaw allows that that's just not practical. Because any conditions we suggest, uh, simply couldn't reduce the unwarranted impact that this will have on the butters.
Gentle time?
Okay.
Thank you. Charlie.
I'm Dr. Charles Kenny. I'm speaking as a private citizen to you. At the last meeting, town council said it was important to note that he disagreed with the applicant regarding the stormwater permitting process. Mr. Heap wanted to emphasize that the select board was under no obligation to act the way the applicant was asking and that it was reasonable to expect a fully designed stormwater system to be submitted with the application. You should heed town council's advice. You cannot make a prudent or fully informed decision about these complex issues when you hear testimony only from the applicant. You owed it to us whose drinking water is at risk to hear the other side of the story from qualified experts before you permit this project. The entire town of Stockbridge sits on a karst. You should ask to hear testimony from a karst hydrologist before any stormwater permitting is allowed. The safe maximum yield study directed by DEP is not just a safe maximum yield study. DEP is also requiring isotope analysis and thermal imaging to assess the impact of groundwater on the reservoir. You should wait for this groundwater study to be completed before you permit this project. Duzisto drains into three drainage areas, northwest into the wetlands, southwest into Lake Everett and southeast to the Huzatani. Town council should advise you about national pollution permitting requirements or letters of exemption therefrom for stormwater drain into navigable waterways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Lisa Sauer. I know you guys think I'm going to talk about the mansion, but I'm not. Um, I just want to remind everybody that the selector did ask for peer review and the applicant did pay for it. Um, there were fifty-four comments in that peer review that I think have been lost. A lot of it has been clarified somewhat tonight, but I think with the carrot that was being dangled in front of us with the, uh, with the, uh, conservation restriction, we've forgotten some of the other issues. So I just want to bring up two comments. Number ten was with regard to the, uh, hotel residence suites. According to our, section to our estate zoning bylaw, it says these units have kitchens, bedrooms, bathrooms and living areas, and they fall under the definition of dwelling unit. Because each building in the proposed project area will house three or more units under each roof, this is considered multifamily. So our catchy hotel residents, oxymoronic by the way, um, are really multifamily dwelling units, which are not allowable allowable in our cottage era estate bylaw, section six point six point two. Comment number twenty-eight, again with the stormwater plan. The applicant has not demonstrated compliance with the mass stormwater management policy, nor has provided a set of complete plans for stormwater designs to document compliance as the town bylaw requires section six point three point eight. There were multiple other comments that, um, deserve reconsidering. I urge the, the select board to not make a decision on this until they, they look over this peer review once again, because I think, again, it's been forgotten because of the conservation restriction carrot. And, uh, so I'm asking them to reconsider this and, uh, perhaps look at some of these issues more carefully going forward.
Gentle time. Dr. Hyman.
I'm Alan Hyman, and I am in the butter. I live on Tree Farm Road with my wife Valerie. And I, I want to thank Charlie for presentation about the water issues. We have a, we depend on a well and we are, uh, very close to the mansion and we worry about the well being contaminated from people who, who are residing or were just visiting, having dinner at the, at the restaurant. And the other thing I would like to add is who is going to enforce these rules? So for example, if somebody is amplifying sound, do we call the police? I mean, uh, there are many rules. For example, uh, workers can start working at seven AM. And if, what if we hear their workers are at six thirty AM, who do we call? I don't want one to have to call the police. We didn't hear about the enforcement of many of these rules. So I, I wait to hear the response. Thank you. The water is the number one.
Second row, did you want to speak? Yes, no, no. Wayne?
Wayne Slazik, I, I also do not speak for any board, actually, because I'm an individual citizen. As I listen to this, um, I look at that middle piece of acreage that you want to preserve. I think so much has been given as far as acres. It was two hundred and eight acres, now it's close to two hundred and thirty acres that is being given back on conservation restriction. That middle piece has to, if it's ever used for anything different, would have to have a special permit for it in the future. I think that fully protects the town. You won't be able to do anything on it without a special permit in the future, and it allows flexibility for a business plan. Anybody that's owned a business knows that business changes. It's guaranteed to change. And to have some flexibility within this property that started at three hundred acres and now is down to sixty, I think is not asking too much to allow that flexibility within his business plan to, uh, have to come back for a special permit for anything that he might do there. Thank you.
Um, do you want to speak?
Jennifer Carmichael. I'm very much encouraged by the commitment, uh, Mr. Sheen has shown. He and his team have made a huge effort to address the concerns of the town. After the peer review, his team has come back again with more revised plans and answers to Beal's question. This design incorporates many of the elements our bylaws require, and it will provide the town with benefits, with much-needed tax revenues for water, sewer and drainage. It will preserve the hundred and thirty-year-old cottage-era mansion. It may only be the facade, but it still will carry much of the history for Stockbridge there. It will create much-needed housing opportunities. It leaves large areas of open space and agriculture and farm-to-table opportunities on the property. And I just feel we owe it to the residents of Stockbridge to approve Mr. Sheen's application.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Jen. Denny?
Thank you. You know I'm going to talk about water. I might explain just for a moment that I grew up in the southeast corner of Stockbridge on a place called Boulder Farm. It was approximately 440 acres. And that was the location of the original Stockbridge Water Company. And so I grew up really aware of the old pipes which led from the old reservoir in the corner of the mountain there into the town of Stockbridge. And the deeds are very complex, and it's personal to me. And so I'm aware of public water systems. I'm also aware of a great number of people in town who are on private wells. And in Stockbridge, because almost all the town is sited on top of what they call calcareous bedrock, Stockbridge marble. When you drill a well for your home in Stockbridge, you're drilling into bedrock. You're drilling into karst. So what, what is it about karst? Why do we keep coming up with this word? And I, I'm going to go for some help here a little bit.
Gentletime?
Karst is a porous rock.
Denny, gentletime?
Which allows water to flow quickly with minimal
Gentletime?
filtration.
Thank you. Heath, or you need no. Liz? The gentleman in the back?
Oh, it's Kenny.
I know. Tom?
My name is Tom Schuler, and I live at 9 Inflating Crossroad. I just want to express my support for the project. I've been impressed by the efforts made by the applicant to try to accommodate and respond to some of the questions raised by the board and by members of the public. And I would encourage the select board to carefully consider this application and to permit this project to proceed. I think it's important to understand that I think these folks have come in good faith. They have made a number of changes in the application and in the proposal to accommodate the questions and issues raised by our board and by our townspeople. And for those reasons, I ask the board to carefully consider this application and to grant their application, understanding that this is a process where things that they are going to be doing will also be subject to approval from other boards, such as the Conservation Commission, the Sewer and Water Commission. So there are a number of other procedural guardrails, if you will, that the applicant will have to sort of pass between. And I'm confident that, given the good faith they've shown, I think that we have a project this town can be proud of, and I think it would be an excellent addition to this community.
Josh?
Josh Hayron, 62 Interlake Road. When I brought up the Tanglewood traffic the first time, back in January, Mr. Scalise said they could do another road study. But why would you bother after it's voted on? That's your stuff. You're going through there at nighttime. I had 16 questions I wrote for the select board. Nobody asked any of them. $30,000 study, no engineers to be asked anything. Does the town have records of the August 15, 16, 17 traffic study? I went to the DOT years ago. They said, they told me the town is supposed to have a record. I spoke to Mike. He said they can't find any records. What the protocol is to that, I have no idea. But the town, you just can't slap stuff in the road and have Hugh Page go work on a roadway someplace. You have to know this stuff. To me, you would have to have a record of it. We have no idea what's taking place on that roadway. Interlake Road operates without delay, level and straight along its frontage, and several hundred feet beyond the property. Is that level and straight? The roadways might got this in front of the people's properties. You will kill somebody up here. Why is this not being addressed? Why are the engineers not being asked this from deals? Who is telling the people this stuff? Interlake Road is not a state highway. It's a, it's a state highway. It's 30 miles an hour in the vicinity. It is a 40 mile an hour zone both ways. You know what it's like to take off out of those driveways? You have a matter of seconds. And when you get cars both ways, a lot of the times, you're out of time there. You're going to plow half a town out of this place. Absolutely unreal. The abutters have requested a site visit. Why can nobody drive two minutes with absolute respect to the residents here for this, to do a site visit here? It's unbelievable. Absolutely unbelievable. Mr. Scalise can address all this stuff. He can address the abutter safety, or you give somebody from Beal's, because if they've told this stuff here, then how would you feel that you have an accurate traffic study of this roadway?
Time. Thank you.
That is gun-shut operation.
Time's up. Ann, did you want to speak? Gentleman next to him. Jim?
Jim Ballfance. Again, I speak as a private citizen. I would only make a couple of comments after this. This project has been in our sights since 2017. I don't think that's rapid growth. Patrick Sheen has more credibility than anybody I've ever seen in the development business. He will check on all the projects that he has done. They have been done in an outstanding manner. He deserves the right to move ahead and help this town. He's earned that right. The last thing I'd say with regard to the traffic study, it's not up to Patrick Sheen to do the traffic study. It's up to the town to do the traffic study. That road up there has been dangerous for how many years? Somebody just went in and leveled a little section of that from his place about 300 feet just to keep the cars. If you're not hanging on that steering wheel going north, that can pull you right off the road. That road is scheduled to be repaired. But that's not 37 Interlake's fault. So I just submit to you that we did submit a petition for 300 people back in the own court days, 300 residents. They didn't come here to jack. They didn't come here and vote in favor of it. They spoke with their signatures. And we can get the same number of people who will do the same thing in favor of Patrick Sheen. So I hope the board will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, did you want to speak?
Oh, no, thank you.
Miles?
Thank you, board, for listening to us all on Miles' mouth for Train Hill Road. As Tom, I think, said, there are a lot of other guardrails that the town has at their disposal to guide a proper path for development, protecting wetlands, protecting the water supply. These are all the areas. I'm on the water spot. And let's put those courses of action into play. I don't think we should look out and say, what if, and what if everything's going to be bad about this project? There's a lot of good coming from this project. A road study should be done, and the town should do that if there's danger to people being pulled off that road. I agree with Jim. That's something the town should do. That's not up to this developer to do that. He is going to increase traffic there. However, with the discussions we've had here and staggering events and all those kinds of things, I'm impacted by traffic along that road, too. But I have faith that the town will take the right measures with the developer to adjust those things going forward, not stop the project as cold right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter? So I'll open it up to the Zoom participants. So if you can raise your virtual hand so we can call on you. Looks like Stuart is first. Stuart?
Yeah. You know, I haven't heard any. We've heard a lot of discussion about the CR and a whole bunch of things about the density or failure to have density in the back of the project. But there's no discussion about the things that are, I think, very important about the front of the project, which has to do with, there's no discussion of general safety, no discussion of road safety, other than has now been raised, no discussion of the density of the property, no discussion of the number of people permitted on the property or failure to adhere to the bylaws, the water issues, the congestion that it will bring. I'm concerned about my well and my septic system, and I know there's going to have to be blasting because we had to blast on our property. And I'm concerned about the seismic effects of all that blasting. There's no track record necessarily of the developer here in developing this kind of project or any sizable project such as this or managing a resort or hotel. And I haven't heard anything about conditions relating to that. So how do we know he's going to be able to perform? Have you decided how much you're going to ask for in the way of security so that he can perhaps be certain of performing or lose a substantial amount of money? I'm concerned about the lost property values. You're concerned about the profit for one person. But how about the loss of values for many, many people who are neighbors or who live in the area? So I think that you have largely failed to really address the important issues for the community while being bogged down in things about the back of the property. And I think that's a terrible failure on your part.
Thank you. Mary, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. Safety and security of the residents and the integrity of the town's quality of life really need to be the top consideration. So I ask you to vote no for now. What's the rush? I've invited the selectmen to a site visit. I'm told that it was relayed to all of you, and two of the three refused. I've also asked for a traffic safety study to be done during the height of the Tanglewood season. The facility's exit driveway is directly across from Josh's house and really close to mine. We have significant slopes to our driveways. And if you had taken us up on that offer for a site visit, you would have seen that accelerating to exit the driveways while others are accelerating to exit the venue after having a few drinks at a wedding is a recipe for disaster. And it's a recipe whether they're drinking or not. The refusal of the select board to do a site visit compounded with a refusal to do a traffic summer safety study during those key weekends with the venues likely to be at capacity is really negligent, in my opinion. Additionally, you've heard the applicant, their plan for underground parking. To make that happen, you need to work through the bedrock on the site. There will be an impact to underground water sources, which of course is the same underground water source that is the drinking water for my family and for the abutters and so many more. Once again, a rush to pass a project of this magnitude without the proper environmental review will expose the town both to liability, to problems with drinking water, and safety issues. There's a duty to protect our residents, and the select board has that responsibility to do an environmental review. There is a rush to push this through that I don't get. The cost of that rush will in all likelihood be the town's safety, our drinking water, and our finances. The applicant had this plan in October. It only came to us a few months ago, and yet you're rushing it through. I think you need to say, let's do all the studies we need to do environmental review and traffic safety
Mary?
for voting. Thank you.
Kate?
Yeah. Thank you, Jamie. I'm on the planning board, but I am speaking for myself. I agree with the approach of focusing the built environment. I would be looking to reassure abutters and frankly, the town on water concerns. I understand that there's a late-breaking information, it sounds like. But there is, as far as I know, there is indication from previous studies of an environment, what's known as a karst environment or a permeable soft stone environment. So I would be looking to reassure people on their water supply. And I would think the applicants would like that as well. And if a stormwater system plan is in order, I would also recommend doing that as part of the special permit application rather than as a condition. Speaking of noise, that came up. I can, we do have a zoning bylaw for noise. It's on page 72 of our zoning bylaw. And I can tell you, it's not really working all that well. So I think it would be good to tighten that up. Fireworks have been brought up. And I would just refer you to a Forbes article from 2019, Forbes Magazine. And one of the paragraph headings is, "Fireworks create a toxic fog of fine particulates, poisonous aerosols, and heavy metals." So I think most residents in Stockbridge, as I know them, don't want those heavy metals raining down on them. It's also not good for wildlife. The noise startles them. So in terms of a site visit, if there has not been a site visit, I highly recommend one for the select board and potentially for the planning board members who are interested in an advisory capacity. For me, when I started doing
Time's up, Kate.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak? I don't see any hands. I'll move away. There's approximately 30, about 30 minutes left. If there's anyone from the floor that has an additional, that's remain to the, you still have two minutes, but remain to the, you may speak. But I would raise your hands, please, Charlie.
Again, I'm speaking as a private citizen. The, I want to remind you that Town Council said to you specifically, and he even added that he emphasized this, and he thought it was an important thing to bring to your attention, that you, as a select board, could require the applicant to file a complete stormwater design with the applicant. Now, we have a study done, being done, that's been directed by the DEP that studies the groundwater influence on our reservoir. We live in a karst. I appreciate you giving me these extra seconds to speak. But in order to be fully educated about what the dangers are to our town water system in a karst, which I've never seen sewer and water bring up at all, okay? In order to know that, you need to invite, while you're waiting for this groundwater study, a qualified karst hydrogeologist. And you should listen to that person so you can learn what hasn't been brought up by the one-sided presentation of the developer.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. Anyone else on the floor? Go ahead.
Different topic. We've heard discussions about preservation of the cottage, which appears to be more illusory than real. And if the developer is saying he'll preserve the cottage as much as possible, he has all the wiggle room he wants. I think the board should require an thorough engineering study as to what can be preserved and what can be restored. And it's only after you have that and the comments of a professional restorationist that you'll be able to decide whether this project complies with the requirements of the cottage bylaw at all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on the floor that has an additional comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment.
Okay.
I think she left her hand up. Kate, did you leave your hand up?
No, I, I just, if, if there's an opportunity, and I certainly defer to your, um, to your judgment here, I would just finish my thought. I think you actually, you guys owe me a minute because I took up that citizen's petition. So if I may-
Go ahead.
Okay, so what I wanted to say, um, relating to site visits is that I, I think they are so important. And, um, for me, when I, I started doing site visits for special permits, it was a game changer. Um, I, it is not really until you are onsite that you really get it. Um, how the plan, how the submitted plan works, how it looks and how it feels within the context of its home or its setting. So I would encourage, um, the opportunity for a site visit, certainly for the select board, and as well for any interested planning board members, uh, who would like to serve in that advisory capacity. I realize that this is a, a select board special permit decision. And, and thank you all for your hard work on this. I know these, these are very difficult. And, uh, I certainly respect the, the time and care going into this, uh, all around. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. And Mary, did you have an additional comment or is your hand up?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. And I just want to reiterate that last point, that a site visit, I personally invite all three of you to my home across the street as a Butter to come see. Uh, I have invited and no one has, uh, only one select person has agreed to come see it. I invite all three of you. Stockbridge should be the model for how to do smart growth. Let's take the time to do the studies needed to make the best decision for the long-term health of the town. Let's just make good decisions. Ramming something through, it, it sounds like something is happening in Washington these days. It should not be how we do business in Stockbridge. So let's take the time, let's do the groundwater study, let's do the traffic safety study, and please come do a site visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Don, stay on Lake Drive. Um, there seems to be a rush to get this thing, uh, through. At the same time, there seems to be a lot of questions, and I don't understand why we would need to rush this thing through at this point in time without these questions being answered and the studies being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands up, or Miles?
I've sat in a Miles' mouth before train hall roads. I've sat in a lot of these meetings, these discussions, and there's a lot of neighbors who are upset. I guess I asked them and the folks on the Zoom, too, if you have an alternative plan that you'd like to see done to preserve, uh, Gilded Age mansion. I haven't heard any of that. It's all about how this plan is a bad one. But if you do want to save the Gilded Age mansion, which I'm in favor of, and you have a bylaw to do so, are there alternatives, sketches, anything you've brought to the table for discussion? I, I don't think there have been. So let's, um, like I said before, use the due process. Well, this developer who does have some plans, he's got a team that's been preparing these plans for you. I, I think we've all heard a lot about these plans. I don't think it's been rushed either. It's been four years, five years, so.
Nine years.
Nine years.
One time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anne?
Anne, we're going to the select side. I have a plan. I have a suggestion. Cut it in half. It's too big. Simple.
Thank you. Josh?
Cash payer on sixty-two in Lake River. This type of commercialism and you're dragging everything in here and out here, what, these properties are tokens. Like, like we want them in a, in a poker game, like they were given to us. Our properties are tokens because of how bad this is to get out of these drives and what you're getting hammered with. And there are, one of the reasons we're, we're tokens here, like, you know, don't say anything here, is because you want to keep a quarter mile of open space. And you can't, and there's no plans to put any other access through there. So what do you do? This isn't even trashing the Butters. This is abusing the Butters. It's, this is, it's not like people wouldn't have any other ideas for something, but it, it, this is way overboard. But this, you're, you're abusing people. So for what? So somebody from New York State and Connecticut can drive by this property who could care less about this town and the Butters? Can see a big, open space. You can go down to the Stockbridge golf course. This is not valued land like gold medals or anything. This is, this is, uh, uh, this is obscene, obscene. And we're gonna, it's like, I tell you, we're not getting trashed. We're getting abused here. But just by the sheer commercialism and the density to have this, like, you're setting up an entire town. It just really shouldn't make any sense to me that this is something that we're having here.
Thank you, Josh. All right, um, we will go on to our, um, select board-
I'll say one more thing, just quickly. We've extended the time. I don't see why it wasn't the numbers of time this vote. I'll stay within the time. It'll just take me a few seconds.
Of course, Charlie.
If you listen carefully to what I've said, and I'm at a Butter, I said nothing bad about this project. I only asked the select board to take the prudent step to delay the project and acquire the proper information so you can make an informed decision. I did not say anything bad about this project.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, we will move on to select board comments or discussion and see where we land. Charlie, Chuck, did you hear anything?
Well, I mean, this is a very tough decision. Um, it's an emotional decision, uh, for the Butters and stuff. But we do have a bylaw that we have to follow. It gives us leeway and quite a few things. This bylaw's been voted on by the town as a whole to save these mansions. I mean, I don't know if I agree with the bylaw or not, but we have it and that's what to follow. The applicant has made multiple concessions, um, to fit what we've been asking for. Um, I've been in construction since I was eighteen. I won't tell you what they have now. And I don't ever have, believe I ever seen a such a compromise and a dialogue and a back and forth agreement, uh, on a project. They're very reputable, um, people. And our decisions have been made on the facts of the bylaw and I'm saying it's a tough decision, um, but that's what we have to go by.
Patrick? Anything?
I, let me composting. Uh, one, I imagine we're not closing the hearing tonight, is that correct?
We have to vote on the conditions still.
So we're gonna let the lawyers work out the conditions and then get together on Thursday, right? So, so I, any, uh, obviously a public meeting has to be scheduled within two days, forty-eight hours notice.
Remember, we did it the other-
I know, I'm making the point. If anybody would like, and I can individually stop by, Mary or anyone else who wants to talk, uh, at, at longer than, at more detail, with more detail than they've had a chance to. Most of you have my number, my email address. Feel free to call me. I'd be happy to stop over and talk between now and Thursday night. Um, having said that, you know, I, I, I agree with everything Chuck just said, you know? Um, this bylaw originally only allowed inns. Two thousand thirteen, the town changed it to hotels and resorts. It's not my, it's not anything I can control, guys. You guys did that, all right? I, I don't know what to say when people say that they don't want a resort when the town voted to amend the bylaw. I, I similarly worry, uh, and, you know, you know, you've got, you've got, when, when the OSRD consultant came in and said he could do sixty-two houses, that was based on the two and four acres. I worry about changes that the state has proposed to increase acreage and what that might do to there. We talk about blasting, all right? When you have only a handful of buildings, I gotta believe it would be better to concentrate the impact on the geology into a small area rather than potentially blast at least sixty-two house sites and maybe more. You know, when you talk about, you, you talk about water and sewer, I think it's much better to have it integrated because it is so concentrated into the water and sewer system that we have rather than potentially drilling wells on those expanded sites that go, that would be all over the place. You know, drilling, drilling into the environment that you're talking about. As to the water, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out whether or not, what, what the, what the nature of the concerns were. We've got limestone all over the burchers, okay? Which is this calcareous karst environment, as it's been called, is all over the burchers. Uh, you know, I, I was buoyed today by the fact that Brian Yellen from UMass, who, who, a resident expert, actually recommended that the town contract, and we appropriated fifty thousand dollars to do that, um, was, was, uh, was, was did not express any concern around the impact on Lake Averick and the groundwater of this development today. And, and we had exchange of texts with Mike phoning him, Mike, Mike took screenshots of and shared with us. I don't know, I, 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 I get where everyone's concerns are. I also think this is a project that is going to take years to build out and that, that we're starting with the conservation. We're focused on the mansion, and then it's going to be demand-driven in terms of whether or not the business plan will actually, will actually, you know, support, uh, the not-to-exceed number on the development. I think that the town gets what it needs. And I think that, that there's at least a, like, a chance that, that this will have a smaller scale than, than what is permitted, at least in the short term.
Thank you, Patrick. So, um, I want to thank everyone for their comments and for their participation. I think that's important. And, um, you know, also to echo, um, Chucky and Patrick, um, I also, um, think that there will be different boards, like conservation and water and sewer, that will have to weigh in, just as Miles brought up. Or I also believe that the, the, the road is up for repair. It's already on the list to be repaired in the coming years. There was a huge blasting project that no one complained about very close to Meadow Road. They'd cut down almost like a thousand trees. No one complained about that. So, and they have a beautiful home now, and it was permitted. It was, it wasn't under a special permit even. It just was a building permit. Um, so we have to remember, like, there, this special permit was not our doing. It was, this bylaw was written by other people and we have to follow it. Um, it's a hard task for sure. Um, is it impossible? No, but it is definitely difficult. Um, um, there was another comment that, oh, I think we've been at this for months. I think almost five months talking. I don't think we've rushed. We've been clear. We've had long meetings. We've been doing our best to, um, be thorough. Um, I also, um, agree, there was a comment about, um, the applicant. I think he, um, I don't think he's going to do a, you know, a terrible job. I don't think he, like, he, the, the whole process, they bent, they have changed, they have fought, they've come back, like, I don't, and also, um, I had, um, to Patrick's point, too, is that I think it'll take a long time to build it out. And I don't know if it'll all get built because it's pretty ambitious and, um, it's expensive. Building supplies are terribly expensive. Um, I don't know. I don't know the future. All I, so, um, I mean, I guess that's all I have for right now that has come. Um, yeah.
Can we make a motion for the lawyers to look at the-
Conditions.
Conditions and we get that back by Thursday, maybe Thursday?
I need to agree on exactly the conditions. I know each one of them. You need to go through each one of them and vote on them.
Not as a group?
No, you need to go through and make sure that each one. I need to walk through them because I know there were changes happening, if there are changes. Remember, as stated, these are your conditions. You're considering points of time, so.
So Patrick, do you want to start?
No, I, I, I'd like, I think that, um, I think that we should allow for clarification of the conditions between the lawyers between now and Thursday, and then review the conditions as written based on, yeah, people heard. And I, and, and if the lawyers want to reach out, uh, out to us individually, our lawyers, then, then that would give us an opportunity to give them feedback as to how those are going, and then present the conditions to the town on Thursday night. And then, and then we could, you know, we could decide whether we're gonna close the hearing and, and have a vote. But I don't want to, it's eight-thirty, twenty-nine, and I'm tired and I don't want to, I want to, I want to have a chance to.
Oh, I'll have that now.
Donna?
That's your process?
Is it Donna?
No, I don't know. I'm asking.
Up yours.
Is it Donna or Chris on?
Donna's on right now. Chris, Chris-
Donna, could you step on and help, um, clarify?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I've heard a number of potential conditions from, from each of you individually. I'm not certain that I have all of the conditions that you want, at least a majority of you. But if you would like us to try to pull together what we think the conditions are, that the board as a whole, as you know, it's going to need a unanimous vote, uh, we can, we can try to do that and present to you something on Thursday.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I mean, you pretty much went through them all and-
And I, I, I would, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to listen to you, but I think if, if, if Art or attorney-
They called me Mr. Ski.
Mr. Ski. If Mr. Ski, uh, want to, want to weigh in on these, I would, I would welcome the chance to read. Wait, geez, sorry. Um, I would welcome the chance to- I would welcome the chance to hear what, what the, what the lawyer, what the lawyers for the Butters would think would be appropriate conditions for us. I can't guarantee you will listen, but-
What is, what is? Patrick?
What?
I don't think that was what Donna said.
No, no, she didn't. I'm saying in addition to that, I would, I'll read them. You submit them, I'll read them. You know, it doesn't, it's not part of the formal process, but, you know, um.
Is that legal?
Donna?
Yeah, it comes part of the record.
Yeah.
Donna, are you still there?
I'm still here. I'm not sure what-
I don't understand.
Yeah, that, I'd like clarification on what you're looking for, Patrick.
I just feel like if, if Art and, uh, and attorney Ski, um, want, want to, you know, weigh in with their thoughts, we should, we should, we should give them a chance. I would suggest you do it as early as possible so that the, that the lawyers can digest it and that we can digest it. And we won't be talking about it as a group, but we can certainly be considering it individually. I don't think more ideas and information hurts us. And so, you know, submit them.
Donna, is that something that-
You've closed, you've, you've closed the public hearing though.
We haven't closed a public hearing.
Comment.
Public comment, right. And, and the public comment section would include the input from the lawyers that you've just mentioned. So I think they have submitted their opinions and their suggestions on conditions. And I think we have enough to work from there. But I think if you're going to ask them to submit something more, you'd need to reopen the public comment.
The public comment, we just closed for each, each meeting in the past. It wasn't like we, we ever, it was just by meeting. It wasn't meant, I don't know.
I think Donna said.
The only issue I have with this, a serious issue, is you're saying they're lawyers. Why can't?
Well, anybody can.
Every, know how many things we're gonna get? It's our decision. Public, all these conditions are a select board decision. And I think if we end up with three hundred different conditions, we'll never go short through them all. You can't just say the lawyer. You gotta product the whole public of every resident in town.
I, I understand. I, I.
And thank you. I don't agree with that.
And I think we have to follow Donna since she is our town attorney that we pay for her services to help us. And she has the expertise.
So. I, I don't think there's anything that anybody is going to add now that we haven't heard before, honestly.
No.
Everybody's had an opportunity to weigh in.
And everyone has sent us letters and emails and, I mean, I don't think we've short, we've not allowed anyone to send us an email or a letter.
I was focused on the actual drafting of the conditions, not the comments and the, the substance of, you know, but whatever, I, I defer the majority.
So Donna, I've lost, so do we vote just to take our conditions that they will be reviewed and we'll review them on Thursday? Do we need to take a vote?
No, because, because of the way things are structured right now, you don't need a vote.
Okay. Do I just need to make an adjournment?
That, that is what I would recommend.
We already have Thursday. Oh, so the next meeting is Thursday at six thirty in the selectmen's room. And thank you all for coming and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?